I'll need to order if anyone please stand.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, we'll start with that first agenda item will be approved within minutes for November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Did anybody have any comments about the minute? I would like to ask for a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have public comments. Read the statement of public comment. Comments from the public sections means an opportunity for members of the community to address issues concerning about policy, budget, or administrative matters, or share ideas about how we can work together to improve the Duxbury Public Schools. We value your input and respect the burdened views. We only ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes and refrain from airing comments with individual members of the school community. Thank you. Anybody in the public would like to write comments tonight? No? Okay. Next agenda item, our report to the school committee.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to provide a brief COVID update. As I've been sharing throughout the fall, we're closely monitoring COVID cases in our schools. Last week, we had thirty-six positive cases spread across the district. As of noon today, we had twenty-two cases for the week from Thursday until today. And to put it in perspective, last year during the January surge, at the most, we had twenty-eight cases in one week with cases across the district. But over that tricky two-week period in January, we had seventy, seventy-two positive cases at DHF alone. So we're, the numbers have been pretty spread out between all of the schools. And so I think due to the fact that we have over eighty percent vaccination rate at the high school, and currently we have sixty-four percent at the middle school, we should expect to see less of a surge over the holidays in comparison to last year, although we have had some breakthrough pieces from vaccinated individuals. And so Mrs. McGuire shared that we need one hundred and twenty-seven additional vaccinations to reach that eighty percent threshold at the middle school, just to keep you informed about that. This afternoon, we did have the COVID vaccination clinic at the Steel Building, and there were one hundred and ninety-five registrations. And I saw that a number of families did attend today that weren't pre-registered, so I think it was pretty busy, and they thought it would probably go beyond the five-thirty end time that we had indicated. So hopefully, they were able to get everyone in. I just wanted to update the entire committee that yesterday we had our first Unit A teacher contract negotiation session, and we'll begin the process in earnest in January. And Michelle McMillkey will be joining us in an executive session at the January meeting to give the entire process overview to the whole committee, so that will be coming up. And I just wanted to recognize some Duxbury teachers. We, as a contract requirement, have our second-year teachers complete a second-year teacher course. Again, they finished up the course last week, and it's taught by Cheryl Lewis and me. And the, the teachers begin the course the last week of June after school gets out. They don't get to leave for the summer. They stay back for a five-day, all-day beginning of the course, and then they work with us two days, two days a month throughout the fall. And last week, they presented their final projects, which were outstanding, and Cheryl and I got to visit each of their classrooms while they were doing the unit that they developed with, for their course, and we got to see them that in action with their students. So I just wanted to recognize Cara Anderson, Mike Farba, Shailen Clancy, Tori Croson, Lori Devine, Adriah Hasha, Melissa Hoppy, Colleen Mahoney, Erin Martin, Cassandra McGill, Natalie Tisoni, or Natalie Fisella, she got married, Ana Valdez, and Maria Varonco. And I wanted to thank Cheryl Lewis, who is an amazing co-teacher. So that was, it was nice to be able to get in all those classes and see that amazing unit they presented. That's it for me. Great. Thank you.
Good evening. This year, our office will be conducting the Civil Rights Data Collection. The purpose of the U.S. Department of Education's Civil Rights Data Collection, otherwise known as the CRDC, is to obtain data related to the nation's public school districts' obligation to provide equal educational opportunities. To fulfill this goal, the CRDC collects a variety of information, including student enrollment and educational programs and services data that are disaggregated by race, ethnicity, sex, English language learners, and disability. The CRDC is a longstanding and important aspect of the Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights overall strategy for administering and enforcing the civil rights statutes for which it's responsible. So we'll be conducting that over the next few weeks and months. And then, in addition to that, I'd like to congratulate all of our students who participated in our December holiday concerts. We want to thank our teachers in the music department and Mrs. Norenberg for her leadership, for leading the concerts and the ensembles. We have two additional concerts prior to December break that we will still be able to enjoy as well. We also had a successful professional development day on December first, which was our early release. We are planning our next full-day professional development on January fourteenth, which will be a full-day professional development, and students will not have class on that Friday. Topics for the professional development include training in data dashboards, inclusivity work, differentiated instruction, the science of reading, as well as department-specific. In January, we also have two parent sessions scheduled. One is in the morning on January eleventh at ten a.m. with Megan Selchin from Puzzled Pieces to discuss students' social emotional health. And on January eighteenth at seven p.m., we'll have Phoebe from the Coastal Center again with us to discuss depression and symptoms of depression in students. Both sessions will be remote, and we will be sharing the Zoom link with all community members the week we return from break. Darkness to Light is a child sexual abuse training program that has reviewed the Duxbury Public Schools policies, and they've made minor suggestions to seven of the current policies. We're happy to share these recommendations with the policy subcommittee, and suggestions included inserting a free foot rule in certain spaces in addition with the wording regarding safe touch. So we'll be sharing those recommendations as well. We have many staff recognitions, and those recognitions range from being approachable and knowledgeable, supporting students in their musical performances after school, as well as support with curriculum technology, answering many, many questions, and demonstrating patience and dedication. The entire Alden family, especially Kirsten Sweeney, was recognized. The DHF Special Education staff was recognized. The Alden Reading Specialist, math tutors, and classroom teachers. Katie Jacobson-Wilcox, Pat Queeney, Mike Corbin, John Acidorian, Karen Doyle, Stacy O'Brien, as well as the students from the breadboard for their delicious meal at Thanksgiving. Christina Sergi, Ed Scarfino, and Matt Lepari. And then we also, I just wanted to share as well, we wanted to congratulate and thank all of those staff who were recognized over the past few weeks. Lastly, we started the Share Dragon outings, and those are optional activities that staff can participate in after school hours. Our first dragon outing was, our, our goal is to try to partner with local businesses as much as possible. And our first dragon outing was in the beginning of December. We had seventeen staff members attend a tasting at Cell Three One. And so it was, I thought it went well, and we also in January will be offering yoga class at DBMS, and we're trying to plan future dragon outings to include activities such as water sports for both tours in Duxbury Harbor.
Sounds good.
So that's what we have for this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next one.
We have everyone.
Sit down for the follow-up.
So we have two invoice warrants that were processed since our last meeting in November. Warrant twenty-two was processed on November twenty-fifth, and it was processed in the amount of six hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-six cents. And warrant twenty-four was processed on December tenth, and that was processed in the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. I do also have a quick budget update. We had the ability to present the operating budget to the finance committee last week. But if it's okay, I'm going to defer those comments to the discussion item later this evening. I also just wanted to address, I've received some questions that have been raised about some of the CARES Act funding. So the town of Duxbury received an additional and final phase of the Plymouth County CARES Act funding. The last phase, which was Phase Seven, was additional funds that were allocated to each town based off of priorities. We did, as a school department, submit some allowable costs to be covered by this final phase of CARES Act funding, which included some contracted services expenses. So the funds do expire at the end of the month, and I think there's been some conversation about, there may be some excess funds that will be turned back to Plymouth County. And there's also been some conversation about potentially utilizing the funding to offset some of the costs that we've talked about with staffing to address some of the needs that we're seeing within the district because of the pandemic. But because the funds expire at the end of December, those really aren't allowable costs for us to be able to utilize the funding. So those, those positions, of course, were, will be funded either by our operating budget or by our SRF funding. So I just wanted to, to address that because I know there's been just some questions that have come up on the additional CARES Act funding.
So none of the tutoring that, in the Title I extra services that have already been provided this year, we couldn't get refunded for that?
So because Title I was already allocated to Title I in the budget for the CARES Act expenses, it had to be any costs that were tied directly to the pandemic that weren't otherwise budgeted. So they wouldn't, it probably wouldn't be, or it wouldn't be a, a reversible expense.
Okay, because I feel like when, and maybe I'm not understanding completely, but when we presented and said that the children were going to be evaluated, and this additional services were going to be used to help them catch up from lost learning, I feel like that directly ties to, and that's what like, you know, others brought up.
Absolutely. So it is directly tied, but what happens when, when we are, we have to submit an application for Title I funding, and that's submitted over the summer. And so when we submit that application, we have to be very specific about what we're going to allocate the Title I fund for. And that pretty much creates our budget for Title I for that, for whichever fiscal year it is. And so because we, we already created that over the summer, and then this Phase Seven didn't really, so I believe the timing for Phase Seven was either late September or early October. That budget had already been created, so that, those funds were already allocated.
So it would be like a duplicational.
Correct.
Okay. And then, just because this was asked of me, the HVAC system, Chandler, was that under like a capital budget? Was that anything, it was capital? So is that something that maybe the town could kind of get reimbursed, or?
So I, I think it's, it's tricky with the timing because that was town meeting last year. So I'm not necessarily sure that, that the town could, because of its budget, potentially, if there were any costs that were above and beyond what was approved at town meeting. Those may be allowable costs, but I don't believe that project would be.
And then the only other thing that was brought up and discussed from like my end was like the substitute teachers that were needed to cover the teachers who were out sick getting due to COVID or vaccination shots that would have like be covered for that. All that has already been kind of, none of that can be used as reimbursement?
So we've tried to submit for reimbursement in the past, but it's just really difficult, just going back to that. We've already budgeted for some of the substitute coverage. And so I'm just not sure if we'd be able to provide sufficient backup saying that it was specific to COVID or specific to the pandemic to have those expenses. Because the CARES Act funding too was through a reimbursement process, we don't, we're not just allocated the funding and then able to spend it as we see fit. We have to actually provide, provide the backup to say, this is what the expense is, and then it has to be approved for reimbursement. So for some of the salary expenses, it's been really difficult to have those reimbursed.
I feel like substitute teacher is more of like a per dam expenditure, so I would think that would fall separately than salary. So that was the only reason why that was kind of brought up. All right. Well, thank you for addressing all that.
It sounds as if those expenses have to be unforeseen. So the minute you foresee something, for example, substitute expenses, even though they're related to COVID, the evidence is there in the budget that you've foreseen it. So therefore, you can't argue that it's unforeseen and therefore eligible for reimbursement.
Was the budget, did you exceed your expected budget for substitute teachers with all the extra teachers that were out for COVID last year, though?
I don't believe so, not for last year. And for last year, for some of the previous phases, we've already submitted any of the expenses up to and including that date. So we've been trying to just keep track as we've gone along. And so for this final phase, it was really just looking at any of the expenses that we could have potentially incurred during this fiscal year or during this school year. So some of the contracted services expenses that I referred to, we've had, we're still paying for some of the storage containers, we're up for some of the spacing. We have the air quality that we'll be talking about a little bit later tonight. We've had to pay for, for those tests to be completed, Zoom licenses. So those are really pretty straightforward expenses.
And they've already been submitted.
And those were submitted.
That's great. Thank you. Next, Tucker.
Hi, how are you tonight? So just a brief update of something that comes down the pipe is called the tier-focused monitoring, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They thought it, the school department, heavy focus on the special education department. It used to be a full six-year cycle that, I'd say probably four years ago, they divided into two set groups. Group A, which has a certain set of special education criteria that need to be reviewed, and we start with a self-assessment process, and they come on site and do an overview, a review of that. We are in the group B process, and the self-assessment is due in May. So again, they come look at student records and just some of our processes and procedures and pieces of that. So we look at that. And in the process of, as part of group B, we look at program evaluations. So I'm actually working with a couple retired special education directors to see who can do a program evaluation of our special education department. And that will be part of this process, which is great. So it's student records. They look at just our, there's, you know, they kind of break all of the different criteria. There are fifty-five different criteria that they break down into groups. So I'll be able to share more of that at some point in time, but it's, I really like the process. Even though we're not in Group A, I continue to look at Group A at this point in time, just to make sure that we're still on target and track with the, you know, the different parts and pieces. And if we do see things that might need some tweaking, we have the opportunity to do that, particularly before they come on site next year. But we just had a training on what it looks like last week. So, you know, I'm looking forward to that process and the information that we gain and just, it's, it's good to, you know, keep looking and reviewing and, you know, you've grown in your development. So there's that. The CPAC has Monday night, a parent support meeting. It is, so twelve-twenty at five-thirty. I'll be sending out a Zoom link on behalf of the CPAC tomorrow. Just to keep, just for thinking, January twenty, we have, as I've tried to do parent connections over this school year, I have my next parent forum from five to six on the twenty, the twentieth of January. And so that will be held most likely in the library. We were using the school committee room, but that's not an option anymore. So, but what I keep affectionately calling the great flood of twenty-twenty-one, which is the basement of the special education department, that defines some other places to go. So we will be looking at using either Valley School or the middle school library for that. And then we will also be doing the, a presentation. And right now, with myself and CPAC, we're working with the Marietta Collaborative for one of two trainings. It's, one is kind of creating calm and chaos, which is all about executive functioning, and then the other one is about emotional freedom. So these are current presentations, and one of those will be in January, and the other will either be the April meeting. So more information to come with that. So that's just what we have happening in the department.
Could I ask you, when you joined us, you had, you were dumped into a tier-focused monitor during process, like the minute you arrived, right?
Yes.
That was the group A?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes. So I arrived after the first of two thousand eighteen, find out on November first that we are having a tier-focused monitoring self-assessment do that man. So it was actually a really great opportunity for me to learn a lot. And so, you know, just one of the things I've done in that time, just in our master files, like reorganize things based on, you know, consents and IEPs and evaluations, which has been nice for us to kind of keep our paperwork and a much, well, for me, I like things to be really well organized. So we've done some things that way in just our master files. And so file-wise, we're in really excellent shape. So they'll come look at that. You know, we've been working on writing processes and procedures and just those general things. But yes, when I came here, my very first top minute, I thought we definitely found that out. So yes, this is part two of that fun.
Got it.
Yep.
So the six-year cycle is really every three years, they kind of check you out for something.
And it used to be every six years was this massive, like, three-day event where they descended upon you in your files, and it's much more manageable.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our student representatives.
Right now, Duxbury High School and Duxbury Middle School are partnering with the library for a community-wide food drive. Duxbury High School is having a supply drive for our charity this year, Father Bill, which hopefully we hope to get in by, I'd say, the end of the week, so last week four, and then we'll go up to Rock and deliver it all, which is all like household goods and all that stuff. And finally, Duxbury High School winter sports are in full swing, and we're doing well for that. So, Jake, is that what I got?
That's all I was gonna say.
Okay, the chair report. I just wanted to, I know we have a item on our discussion items about the search process, but I just wanted to take a minute to thank the search committee, all the members for their time and commitment. And, and I also wanted to thank the administration, staff, and teachers for all that they're doing to keep the children safe. Really appreciate all the efforts that are made in terms of the COVID safety and reminding the community of the danger for some of our medically fragile folks and people who have books at home. So, thank you. And then with that, we can move to correspondence and business from anybody on the committee.
I went to chart the course. This was last, or a couple of weekends ago, which is the, I got that checked out off my list of school committee obligations, and it was very informative. So I learned a lot. And it actually was pretty good. So I was, thank you for reminding me to sign up, and I enjoyed it. So I'm excited. And the one thing that they brought up that I would like just to discuss, and maybe after we finalize the superintendent search, but they recommended, and I kind of hit home for me, they recommended aligning the superintendent's review, and you can jump in and tell us what you think of this, aligning the superintendent's review with your election process. So like, I came on the end of March, and I had to do a review on Dr. Intenucci, and it was very limited in what I could review him on. So I was like, I think that's much more effective to have whoever's on for the majority of the year be reviewing. So if we could sort of think about that later on in the year, that was just one of the things that I liked. And the other thing that they suggested, and it was just random, but because I'm way along with CPAC, is they said that CPAC should be on the agenda at regular intervals. So I didn't know what you guys thought about that, and I'm happy to go talk to Jenny or if you guys would like, if that's something that you've done, or even if it's once a quarter.
We've always, definitely at least once a year, and then if they have other items, they are welcome to be on the agenda, but I'm, I'm happy to have it be more regular, just knowing how this year has gone and how packed the agendas are. I also just want to be respectful of all the Yeah, all the agenda items. So I don't know if we should make it a standing one, or if we can just say if they have items they want to bring to our attention, they can reach out and say, can we get on the agenda? But absolutely support that, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. And like, tonight, have a, cover, cover some of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Glad that, that was worth the time.
Yeah, it was good. I sent it to someone who was very funny. We got along.
Did they feed?
They fed me.
Yeah.
And then I also wanted to come in also about the band, the concerts. It always, I'm the Alden student, and it always amazes me how much these kids learn in such a short period of time. So congratulations to the music department. You guys come on a really good show. So thank you, everybody. I'm done.
Anybody else? Any other correspondence individuals? Okay, we can move on to our discussion items. If everybody's okay with that, I'm gonna suggest that we pull up the superintendent's search process update. We have Ray here with us from the Well, I think, can we do the cheerleading now, please? We have a parent. Oh, we do for that? Okay, okay. So let's do that. We'll do the cheerleading first, and then we'll do the superintendent's search update. If that's okay with everybody. Sound good?
Okay.
Great.
Not that they don't want to be here.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, I'm Lori.
This is, this is Carly. Carly's our cheerleading girl.
Thank you.
We're here tonight just to talk about the trip and answer any questions from the So the big thing is we're going to, the cheerleaders, for the first time ever in our program, scored high enough at our state competition to be invited to participate in the national competition. So
Congratulations.
And it's incredible, given kind of where the program, how the program had to exist through all the tumult of last year and some really strange restrictions that were imposed upon cheerleading advanced teams across the state. And so it really speaks to the resilience of our kids and to their, to their code. And so presented with this opportunity, this Carly's done a lot of work to explore logistics of it, figure out how it can work. And I spent some time with principals at other high schools who have schools traveling primarily overseas over the, the upcoming month or two about ways in which that we could, could manage and support those kids and those families on trips. So we do think that it's possible, there are certainly variables that we're gonna have to work through probably right up until the day that we do think that it's a logistically possible thing. There were trips that were proposed earlier in the fall, said it's for youth departments considering, as well as some other international trips, and we deferred, considering that, because of the enormous lead time and massive and massive expense and logistics associated with the Disney trip, for example, or some of the other ones that we wanted to make sure that we understood how to operate in that kind of environment. It's hard to forget that in August and commit to those things at that time. The nature of this is that it's, it's almost, I think, 90 days from today, right? Which is a much shorter and steeper ramp in a lot of ways. But it's a little bit easier to see what's ahead and understand how we can support kids. So.
It's also a smaller group, more manageable in my mind. You know, under 20 kids or a match of 20 kids. So, and they're very deserving kids that've worked really hard, despite, you know, everything that happened last year with their season, COVID, and other stuff. So it's worked really hard. I'd love to be able to take them and obviously, you know, follow every, you know, precaution or, you know, with guidance from the school.
So, so to that end, like, we do expect to ask that the student is required to test before they go. We have a new, I spoke with a tour company today about how they've managed this other, how they've managed a couple of other competitions that they've been running over the last year. They actually ran festivals all last year in Florida. They tend to have site specifics, whatever venue they're using, they use the rules of that convention center county or jurisdiction. So we have to work through that. They can, those can change really and vary quite a bit depending on what event. So we will have to manage that. We do, just to make that every student, every one of our students, has to test before they go. And currently, I have been talking about some of the logistics associated, if we had a positive case and how we would manage that and communicating with families and chat rooms. And I talked, speaking with the tour company today, how they provide some assistance for isolated kids. And I think probably just since we're gonna have to do it, right? In any sort of way over the coming years. And so this will give us up to, as well, just to learn how to manage and plan for managing those contingencies, which is valuable, is valuable. So. So we do think that we can, we can do it.
And there seems to be more visibility in terms of domestic travel arrangements than there would be for international.
Yeah, and we, yeah, and also we're not worried about, some of the other schools are, have trips to countries that are now closing. International travels.
Yeah, exactly.
And vaccination status and stuff, it's required for entry and, so those variables are not present.
Right.
What do you need from, as a leader?
And any questions? When you read the proposal, did there any questions that came to mind about some other COVID contingencies? Or, so it'd be self-funded by the families and the fundraising?
Exactly.
Okay, and is their goal to raise as much of the cost of the trip as possible to each of our non-family?
Yes. We'd like for them to raise two-thirds, hopefully more. But I think the kids also need to have a little investment. You know, I told them, you know, their own money, you know, work towards it. They work on the mats, but also work toward it on their own. And we have some ideas for fundraising that I also told them, you know, they be sit, mow lawns, you know, make some of your own money. And of course, they're gonna wanna, you know, have some spending money down there, too. So, yeah.
And we have, we have backup funds for kids who, whose families can't. But there's not gonna be an instance where a kid can't participate because.
Yeah, I think the, so there are, we do have some funds available. This is the Dossie Damage Fund and Guidance. So we definitely get some. If a student was close, we would figure out a way to do that.
Great.
All of our booster organizations, the stunt club, being a part of that. There's, in the, in the fundraisers that are proposed, there are some that are managed by the stunt club as a group, and some that will be kid-specific.
And if they wanted to reach out to Mrs. Dossie, it's completely confidential if that's the end of what we mean. I think it's just important to emphasize that because we don't want any student to not go because of being embarrassed that anyone would find out. So we just want to make sure everyone knows that's confidential, that whole process.
It is a challenging time of year. There's no doubt about it.
Is the deposit due? Is there a deposit due for December? There is, to get the, you know, early discount.
Yeah.
And I happen to have a parent here who's an officer in our stunt club. We already have money from other fundraisers. I think our, the competition that we had for this fall raised enough to take care of the deposit for all 18 or 20 kids. Is that right, Sarah? Yeah. So to avoid the, you know, busy time holidays, you know, the hundred dollars for kids we could, you know, cover with the existing money.
Great, great. Do you have a minimum number of student athletes that needs to be able to attend?
No, it's based on the routine. I'd love to compete 15 and have alternates, up to five alternates. But if something were to happen, you know, we've had this happen in local comps last minute, I had to take a stunt group off the mat, then it would be, you know, 10 kids plus three alternates. The state of Massachusetts requires six kids on the mat to compete. So it's really kind of hard to do, but it can be done. But our goal, what we'd really, we'd like to include as many kids as we can competitively. I just want to say, when I read, I slipped the gem yesterday, I looked through the paperwork, and the MIAA recognized cheerleaders as athletes. And I find that completely insulting, that it's not a sport. Cheerleading is not a sport. And if you have ever been to a competition and seen what these girls can do, you would, I hopefully disagree with that, because I think it sounds really good.
Thank you.
A sport, yeah.
It's classified as the same group of student counselors and chess clubs and other things as they were. So it is, it is insulting, given, given what they're doing and the multiple ways they compete and represent the school.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody object to moving that action item up to the now? Yeah, is that okay? So we have an action item, vote to approve out of state travel 2022 cheerleading trip to nationals. Kind of motion?
Motion.
Second. Any questions or discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so now we will move, our next item will be the superintendent's search process update. I'd like to invite Rachel to the table.
Hi, Rachel.
Good evening.
Evening, Rachel. Evening, Rachel.
Do I need to use the mic?
I think, I think as long as we speak loudly and clearly, our friend the owl can pick it up. But you're welcome to use the mic if I'm like to have your voice be a little louder. It's up to you.
Good evening. I'm pleased to report that we're on schedule. The search timeline that you accepted back in the fall, and it's been posted on your website. We met all those deadlines. The application process closed on December 3rd. The screening committee had a productive meeting on Monday night. They began discussion around interview questions. And then they had access to all the application materials in executive session. Had a very good discussion and selected some folks to move forward and interview next week, excuse me, the week of January 3rd. And we're on target to complete that work, hopefully no visits by the end of the week, to be able to fall the X number of finalists onto you. And that'd be publicly announced, I think received on and publicly announced on January 12th. That is in the search timeline. The next piece of the process is something that you all need to decide upon. But right now, I would recommend that you think about doing your forums with your staff, your parents, your community organizations, et cetera, starting in that following week, or the week of the 17th. And also do your school committee interview process. However, you set that up, and I can hold it in the past, as I understand it, Ducksbury has done X number of interviews in a particular evening, as opposed to a separate interview each night, or you need to formally decide that. And then after those interviews and those forums, you will have time to do site visits in the districts where X number of finalists may reside. And you're on target to make a decision by February 4th, which is a Friday or earlier. Since you have a school committee meeting on February 9th, you probably want to set up a special meeting to deliberate and vote and make your decision. So it's been a very productive screening committee group. They've spent a number of hours looking at all application materials and had good discussions together. That's my update. If I'd answer any questions? I would only say that executive session items are still confidential. And I can't really share details publicly. I can do a more specific summary perhaps at the meeting in the control, publicly. Application, et cetera.
And so just to confirm, the interviews that are happening in January, those are also executive session, correct?
They're all.
Until you select finals.
But under section eight of the section statute. They're all executive sessions.
Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you. So, so it sounds like we have two things we're gonna talk about as a committee. It's the, how we want to do the final school committee interviews. If we want to have, try and get them all done in one night, or if we go ahead and set up maybe two meetings, instead of out of the two nights, depending on how many we have, which kind of do a rough estimate. And then, and then probably schedule a special meeting. Given how busy our agendas have been, I would, I would prefer to schedule a, let's just say a separate meeting, but the way we've done it in the past is, we've done all the interviews in one night, and then we had the discussion at the end of the night and made the decision right there. But I guess if we did it this, we had two. We have the session at the end of the first night, and the session at the end of the second night to do the selection. So it's not necessarily a separate meeting, right? No, it's not.
What we, what the screening committee has, the schedule the screening committee has approved to interview two candidates in an evening, until we work through all the candidates.
Yeah.
So we felt that that was, allowed us enough time to consider each person without crowding, you know, our minds.
Right.
And so that might be where we're thinking about when the finalists come to the school committee and say, okay, we're gonna do two candidates per evening until we finish them all.
Ray, what do you typically see in terms of screening committees? How many finalists are usually, I know it depends on the candidates and what's going on, but what's, is there a typical number that are?
Various committees make decisions, but certainly our recommendation is no less than three. We could go to four or five, if the screening committee felt that that's what they'd like to recommend. But three to four is traditional number of moving forward. You also have to be prepared, if you move four people forward, there might be someone that withdraws. Okay? That's how you don't move two people forward. So whether someone withdraws, you're in a position where you only have one candidate to consider.
Yeah.
The other thing I would just caution you on, that if you were to do the interviews all in one night or even two nights and make a decision, you want to do your site visits, obviously, before those interviews, and your forums before those interviews, so that you have that information to inform your discussion. That might move the interviews to the week of the 24th.
Yeah. So I think in the past, I think that all happened before. Because the site visits happened before the interviews.
They happened the day of the interview, as I recall. So the candidate would come to the candidate.
But I can keep talking about us in the site visits there.
Right.
That might have been before, that was before, so.
And if, and if you announced on the 12th, X number of finalists individually will know that they're finalists. They won't, they won't know, others that no one will know. So you can't expect them on the evening of the 12th to arrange a site visit for the following Monday in their district.
Right.
That's just really not enough time, I think, to kind of plan that, so.
So, so what I'm hearing is we use kind of the week of the 17th, maybe for our forums, that word.
Forums.
Forums, so in the week of the, the end of that week and the beginning of the next week to do site visits in their districts. And then maybe set up meetings like, I don't know, the 26th, 27th of January type thing. But what I, I think probably makes sense that people can kind of stop and take a look at their schedules and everything. If it's maybe I put them together, because this is logistics. We can do logistics over email. So I could put an email to a couple of different options, and people can let me know what looks best for them from a logistic perspective, instead of, I actually was right now. Does that work?
And again, the 12th is a Wednesday. So if you begin your forums on the Monday, the 17th, or the 18th, you can let the community and the staff know that there'll be forums on that day.
Right.
They won't know the names of the candidates until.
Right. We can replace them. Right. Candidate, A, B, C, and D. Yes. Yeah. Okay. That sounds good to me. Any other questions for them?
Thank you, Greg.
Great, thank you. Good stuff. Next, for our discussion items, Athletic Advisory Council update with Mr. Donovan. Good timing.
I thought you laughed.
I know. I can tell. I know, I just thought you named other people.
Fan, all exciting.
So exciting.
All right, good evening again. I just want to provide a, just a brief update on the Athletic Advisory Council. So the council had its first meeting on November 18th at the high school. We had a lot of, it was a lot of moving parts and scheduling a meeting with everybody. And so we kind of opted for a bit of an unorthodox 2PM meeting time, which allowed us to get kids and some parents and others, and just all the school staff in one place at one time. So this is the final roster, I guess would be appropriate term for the council, of parents, students, coaches, committee members, recreation staff, and then district staff. And we scheduled our next three meetings, or we scheduled three meetings over the rest of the year, and can add certainly more along the way, but they're scheduled for Thursdays, January 27th, March 24th, and the 26th. I think ultimately, we'd like to use the school committee room, but right now, we're using Main Street. The conference room on Main Street. You know, that's why, Laura. You know, the goals for the year that the committee members put together was creating a forum. You know, they're overarching goals, right? To create a forum to discuss strategic planning for the district, provide support to the athletic director, decision-making, we're gonna take a look at the coaching evaluation tools and consider ways to include player feedback to start the point in process, with the hopes that we can, by the, we're gonna work on that in our next meeting and get some, possibly some changes by the end of the winter season. And then to really initiate conversations with our school community through a survey tool about the long-term needs of programs, if you can facilitate twice, the facility itself, and our long program needs. Now, that was something that we started to look at with. Now, that was something that we started to look at with, in this budget cycle in building out the larger capital needs of some of our teams, which had largely been left to the boosters program to fund. Everything from hockey nets and the actual netting material in some cases to benches and bleacher systems and cages and equipment and uniforms. And so we're trying to bring all of that in, you know, the school budget, which I'm still a part of, but also trying to get an understanding of what our players and coaches will think, excuse me, players and families think we need and how our facilities compare as they go around to other schools and campuses and tennis courts and other venues. It helps to prioritize where we need to make future investments. So that is our overall, those are our four big goal areas. And there's a number of members of the committee who are here this evening. And if anything you want to add to it, please feel free to.
Well, I think that for me, the most important point up here is that it's the first bullet point. That this is where stakeholders in the athletic program can talk about a long-range planning for the program. Because you think about all the students that are involved in athletics. It's an enormous proportion of our overall student body. And so it's, I think, important to have a long-range plan. How, you know, what are we going to, what sports are we going to offer five years from now? Are there, are there other things that we should be doing? And so facilities is part of that, but also just how the program, what it, what it's shaped, it's going to look like. There's no other part of our school district where we don't engage in long-range planning. And so this just seems like a real opportunity for a program that affects so many students to go through that same long-range planning process and consult. So that, I think, is for me the most valuable part.
I know too, with last ten to fifteen years, let's see, our, our real growth as far as, let's see, is in sports, it's been the issue of volleyball at the varsity level. And then we added unified PE, a unified track, I believe, two years, three years ago in spring. And it's in, Stuck and I were meeting about this last week and I know it was Vanessa's part of the team as well, is bringing unified basketball, introducing it next fall. So that's in our roadmap, but that actually has come up yet. So beyond that, but beyond those three, there has not been any discussion about.
Yeah, and I think having this gives you guys priority planning, a bigger forum to think about how you want to develop.
I was really impressed by that previous, I have a lot of people involved in this great, you have a problem.
Yeah, you know what? It's a wonderful group.
Yeah.
We're very fortunate and to those who are, you know, outside the group from boosters and Mr. Christian, you know, he's got thirty-five years of coaching at the high school and working, you know, there's just a lot of.
Connection with the town as well.
There's a lot of experience there.
Why didn't the financial piece? That kind of went over my head. Who's paying for what? Like, if the kids pay the fee, but who's buying the uniform, like the boosters supplement?
Yeah.
Was that, I don't.
So the. Yeah, so it's a great question. So over the last probably year and a year or so, what we have, we eat and Danielle, myself, we've really started to kind of throw these together. A lot of the, the school department budget is covering, a lot of the, began to cover lots of uniforms. But that's relatively new in the history of our athletic program. Some of our teams were still buying their own uniforms to fundraise money as recently as like eight years ago because it was not part of the operating budget. And so the evolution of these teams was that the school fund coaches and everything that goes with it, the facilities and everything that you want to it, fundraise for yourself. And so over time, there are still parts of that culture that exist in which it have most recently included buying the riser systems or bleacher systems for the Steel campus that boosters has paid a lot of money for over the last couple of years. Those are things which, you know, the previous bleachers, I always want to call them risers. It's the chorus teacher in me, I'm sorry. So the previous riser bleacher systems are the old wooden ones from like our childhood, right? That's a, that's a capital.
Your childhood might be a little different than others.
Buy much anymore, right? And so that's, those are things which we have been largely asking boosters to support, which we, which really we should, which is why we have a hodgepodge of different furniture all over. That is the place. We have not had a plan, a long-term plan for how we replace everything from soccer nets and field hockey cages and lacrosse cages. And we just kind of buy it when it breaks or when a storm knocks it over and it's no longer usable. We quickly go out and buy something, but there's been no plan every year to replace that. In our building itself, our new building, everything in that building that we bought, from volleyball nets to basketball booths and stuff, it's all the same age. Some of it has a lifespan that is now, it's, it's end. Well, we have, in our five-year budget that we put together for this year, we've accounted for some of, for much of that. And so, but if there are longer-term improvements that the town wants to make in places like Steel or some of the gym facilities or the tennis courts, which is something that people talked a lot about over the last couple of years, those are things that we have to.
I think what, during the budget presentation, Mrs. Blake had shared too, that some of the booster funded items really should have been in the operating budget and the boosters were just really taking on a lot and with a lot of pressure for sustained heavy fundraising year after year. And so when Mrs. Blake was brought into the conversation, they were able to discern what should have been capital and what should have been covered by the operating budget and what is appropriate for boosters to be covering. A lot of detail that we found out, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, parents, if you think of parents who have two or three children all in the athletic program and they pay the fee. And then there's the expectation that they contribute to the boosters. That's a lot of money for a single season. And then if those two or three children play several different sports, that's an enormous burden. And it seems that the boosters have done an amazing job. They scale the funds that they have raised over the past five years. It's just astronomical. But a lot of, my view is a lot of it shouldn't have been demanded that, that, that as a school district, we ought to be providing that so that parents aren't burdened unnecessarily.
And I think the equity between the athletic programs, there are definitely different costs that parents have been picking up depending on the sport. So I think that's something important for the advisory council to look at so that it's accessible for all, any sport is accessible for all students. And how can we support that?
Right.
And then some of those long-term asks could be capital elaboration.
There's a number in the five-year plan, there's a number of new requests that we put forward this year and they are specific to the athletic department, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the update. Next. This is the last one with the garden stuff.
All right, so I'm going to give you an overview on AP scores, which at this point now are pretty cool. But some of them are not students coming in spring. A look at what college application stuff has been going on. It's been very busy, kind of normal, but some of it's still coming in, so we'll give you where we are. Just kind of over, mental health is sort of a big thing, I thought, as far as K-12 guidance, just to look at that. And then a few things that we're looking at moving forward. So advanced placement, the next slide just has the raw scores, the numbers. And I think my eyes are actually shooting now, but. That, if you go to the next slide, do not think it might be a little easier, just to show you the five-year trend. So the concern had to do with during 2020, now spring of 2020. Yeah, and then trying to impact that, taking those exams at home or on the computer would have on the overall score. So we did, like many schools, see a little bit of a rise in scores in 2020. College Board will tell you that's not accurate and that, you know, everything was, all these scores were earned and the whole was great. I think they had to justify the cost of their exams in giving them. And so they were a little more flexible in the, in the scoring. However, if you just take the five-year trend, you can see, I mean, we're pretty in line with where we were anyway and where we have been, even if you go back into seven to 10 years, with, we're having consistent scoring. The number of students is staying consistent this year. Again, we're going to test the same number of kids around, even though we have a little bit of a drop in enrollment. It's still around that same percentage, same number of exams. The courses might change a little bit, like sometimes we run chemistry or other times physics, but the number of kids overall is staying in it. The format for this year is going to be back to paper and pencil, which is so funny to say that. But we did have the opportunity to potentially use digital exam in English and world history. We chose to just stay with paper and pencils here and test everyone in the same format to go back to what we used to do. One of the big reasons, to be honest, was we didn't have even an AP coordinator at the beginning of the year. We were trying to like fill that position, get stuff done and get tests. So instead of putting the burden on teachers again to deal with that or technology and deal with that sort of thing, we just said, we're going back to what we know and what we were doing well and keep going with that. So I wouldn't be surprised if moving forward, College Board does give the option for computerized testing again. The hope is that if they do, that it would be in our building because I think that that did, that did prove to give some students some challenges, obviously. So there may be second to the sixth, the ninth to the thirteenth, again, paper and pencil. Our numbers are consistent this year with who's going to be taking the tests in each of the individual courses. The trends really had to do with, we looked at sort of colleges and what they were taking for credit and whether it was going to count. And that stayed pretty consistent. There is actually a link that you can go right on to and it's on the website press too. But you can go on to and you can plug in the course or the exam and the college and it tells you exactly the score. Then if you click on that, you can get to the link that shows exactly the policy at a college. So they did a really nice job with transparency around showing what schools and, you know, what the scores were and where it mattered. To be honest, I still tell students all the time, if I'm still adhering at this point, like, take the course for the course. Take the course for the experience of an AP course. Take the course for the insight to be around all different types of students. You know, honestly, if you got to see in it, great, okay, moving on. And not about the exam so much because in the end, you really do have to score for even five to have it count within your major. But it can give you at least some credit starting at three so that like for registration. So some schools allow, you know, priority registration if you have so many credits and that can help. So a freshman going in that takes a certain number of APs and gets some credits, it can help with registration or housing and things like that. But overall, I would say more and more, it's just sticking with doing it for the course and what it is. Application, so again, I would say this year, we've got the same pace for students applying to school. Those two charts come right from Naviance, which we're using and show the application type as well as the percentage. I can already tell you those percentages are old, just even from Monday. And I do, I have the numbers if you go to the next slide. Yeah, so, so it's now one hundred and ninety-one students of our two hundred and twenty-seven, I think it is, have applied to at least one college ED and EA because they've gone now for like ED two. Oh, early decision and early action. All right, thank you. Yeah. I mean, fifty-one of our students went early decision and that's early decision one. So I'm going to anticipate, we're going to have another full group that will go early decision two based on the decisions that have started to come out. So that, you know, that's a high number. The percentages are still proving to be, so for example, a school that might admit E or nine percent and regular is still admitting twenty percent, you're ED. So depending on the school.
EB and EA, too.
Yes. Yep, so early decision is one school. You can apply to one school and you're making the commitment that if you get in, you're going there. So barring any major financial burden or something that you have to justify, you're going there. You're not going to apply anywhere else. And that's an early action, you can do as many as you want, unless it's restrictive early action, which is a cool mother. But you can do as many as you want and they're going to give you a decision. The decisions with early decision are usually almost, well, almost always admit or deny. Early action can be admit, deny, or defer, and it's most often defer for a lot of students. So two hundred and one students, again, that's jumped up because of the additional, I think it's two hundred and three or four now that have, but have at least applied to one school. Our goal is always to get to every single student. Not that every single student has to apply, but we need to know what their plans are. So if they're not going to apply, we do certainly have, we have a couple of kids that are looking in the military. We already know we have some of a community gap here. But just so that we have those plans, typically we know what's happening with every senior by January, which is, you know, it's, it's great, yeah. We've processed two thousand and six, that numbers up a little bit, applications to thirteen hundred, thirteen hundred. Yeah, I feel like it. Fourteen different colleges. That is on par with years past. By the end of the year, we're usually around, I think it's, yeah, like that twenty-three hundred. So we may see more. It'll be interesting because we definitely, I know even from my student caseload, they sort of picked a few at first and now they're starting to add, so we might see some more applications. That could, that could go over a little bit. Students have traditionally, for I would say, the last eight years averaged about nine applications per student. So that's staying fairly consistent too. Yeah, 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 it is, it is. Although I will say this year, what has been, one of the things, you can go to the next slide. One of the things that came out of COVID was there are quite a number of P waivers and things that have kind of come. There's not a lot of rhyme and reason, like they don't just give us a blanket of them all, which I would love for them to do. But specific for certain things or if a student, you know, sends in something, we've gotten some emails back to say, tell the student to plug in this code. You know, they're trying to work back to certain type of students. So that's, that's nice, but it's still a lot of money because when you factor in the testing and everything else, yeah, you're paying off. So implications and stuff, obviously, COVID is still an issue. College visits are impacted by that and I, I mean, people going onto campuses to do tours and stuff. It's a lot slower, you have to be intentional, you can't just throw up by as much. But also the reps that are coming to us, we did start opening it back up for them to come. We're finding that more and more want to stay on Zoom, which is great, but it, the hour that we're able to do it within the lunch time, you know, no one's opening their computer for the twenty minutes, they finally get to like take the mask off and eat, you know. So we're trying to look at a way in the spring that we can do it during like academic supports, run some things. We've asked the admissions, can they run nights? Because then it doesn't matter, you know, the students want, can they do multiple? So we are looking at some of those, but it does impact. The good thing is that the COVID piece has allowed a lot of the Zoom so that more people can access it. So we've been partnering with other social schools with college visits. There's been a lot of Zoom college tours, you know, college tours, college fairs, that's what I was thinking of, where you can access a lot more schools at one time. So I think that's nice without having to travel, find the rides to do all of the further away schools. So that's been good. The test optional trend has continued before COVID. A little under eleven hundred schools were test optional, it's over eighteen hundred now. Many of them have extended it into 2023. I love it.
That actually means that students don't have to submit their SAT or ACC scores, that's their option.
That is their option, yeah. So if you submit it, they will use it. If you don't, you don't have to. The one caveat that's still there is around some of the schools that do require it for merit money. Although even that number is continuing to grow, the ones that are, that are going to more of a blind. Although even that number is continuing to grow, the ones that are, that are going to more of a blind system. So it's nice to see. It'll be great, they're going to publish a report that's going to talk about the freshman retention rate after this last round, because that's always what they use it for. They said that that predicted retention and getting to sophomore year and graduation. It'll be interesting to see if it actually really did, or, you know, that all these other pieces they're using there. Admissions landscape, the numbers are through the roof with applications. COVID did not have people shy away from applying to schools. Most schools are reporting, and again, another 30% increase in applications. I think UC just put something out that they got like 42,000 applications in the last, last year, and they're expected to be on trend again. You know, Harvard had the same thing, it was like 43,000 or 1,900 spots, you know. So it's, it's huge. They're also now really, really targeting international again, and trying to get students come over here for schools, so that is playing into it. The sports piece played into a little bit, we saw it last year with students that deferred or took a year off because their sport had been canceled and what that did to, in particular, student athletes that were going. But just in general, the number of kids and moving down, I think in general, we're seeing the implications of students that took time off for COVID anyway. And so can they admit the same number and what do they do and what year? And so that's all playing into it. The numbers on waitlists we're seeing are becoming much bigger, because they're not predicting who's actually coming as well. So if they don't go through ED, the colleges are trying really hard to get their yield and they want to make sure that they have enough kids, they're putting extras on waitlists right now in case COVID, something else impacts that. So that's, that's becoming a thing. And then score, I wanted to, this is really awesome, and so excited. We are going to leave that. So, and for anyone that has used it, it is, it's not really user friendly for the students and the parents. First of all, the parents at all, because they didn't have accounts, but students for sure. So this score, aside in 2013, it then got its first sign in 2016, it's been mostly in private schools. And our social life host group talked about, we got it from, you know, one of our colleagues, and we previewed it and we looked at it, and it is beautiful and it is seamless and so user friendly. And it has a mobile app and it does all the same things that Naviance does, plus some. So Naviance finally has had some competition, which is amazing. So us, Hanover, Weenah, I think it was one of our places, have decided to pilot it with Naviance and look at it. So we were supposed to train, I have moved all of our data over. And that, that should tell you enough about it, the fact that I could move the data over. But we were, we're supposed to get into the junior classrooms and our academic support in, I think it was October, and then it was November to demo this. It has taken a little longer to get their trainings to us. They've had a little bit of a short staff situation, but we have now got it all set up. So we're going to be going in there right after the break and demoing it, and then we're going to have a big presentation for parents, because parents can get an account, which is going to be so awesome. The amount of extra stuff it has with like even career inventory. So because it is a college search thing like Naviance's platform, that's only one piece of what they do. They also do all this other stuff around gap years, around learning styles, around career exploration. Yeah, we're going to be able to use it, and we talked about this in learning studies, but, I mean, I, it's just going to be great. I'm going to keep saying, it's going to be great, but when you see it, it just looks beautiful. And it's way more user friendly, it's what the students know, the way you can like drag and drop things. Like all the clunkiness of Naviance is not within sports, all what they already use and do in current technology. So we're really excited. It's, it looks almost like Instagram in some ways, the way it, it really does. Like it's got a great feel in the way you can take, you can take tours of every school right on there. It's great, so we will be doing that, so I'd be happy to give you the preview of that.
I just wanted to say to you in the guidance department for, we have three storm days, as you can recall. It hit us very pretty hard, that storm, that hurricer, but it was right at the time when all of the early decision, early action applications were due. So people were panicked, they had guidance appointments and everything else over that time block where there was no electricity and the teachers weren't in school. So the guidance department was working any way that they could from coffee shops, and they didn't have electricity either, and they were trying to help the students. But this is about, she came in on that Saturday where we still had no electricity. And I think we were having the homecoming football game, and she helped some students in the school on that Saturday when it was still crazy around here. So thank you for not taking those four days off, including the Saturday, helping everyone. I'm sure that was lots of panic in a lot of households.
I can't even, that, yeah, I mean, that was terrible timing for those of you during admissions season, the storm, the weather, but absolutely. And that, I keep saying that to families in general, like I am so fortunate to work with the staff that I do. I really am, and I've been lucky that they've been here for as long, so I've known them for a while. But they, they don't take weekends off, they don't take summers off, they don't, I mean, they are really doing what they need to be doing.
And also, we can't ever forget the letters of recommendation that they're writing, that some staff are writing, because the kids need those to be able to apply, and that they do such a nice job writing those for the students and getting those done. That's stressful for the kids when they're waiting for pieces of their application to be able to submit. So thank you, everyone, teachers and guidance staff are working on those as well.
That's part of the downside, being able to track everything, the panic ensues when you see a stop there, you know, in the old age, you go, oh no, it's gone, it's there, don't worry, and you can put it out of your head now, because you can see it instantly. You know, which is good, a good thing, but it is nice, you know, absolutely. All right, so this is a picture from my house. I'm sure in every house right now, in every school. And I mean, I don't think there's adults or kids that are immune to this feeling right now. So that's one whole slide. But it was really just to say like, this is, this is really, you know, where we are. You know, COVID fatigue, it's real. I mean, we, you know, I see it in my own house, I can tell you, my kids have struggled tremendously. They hate masks, they come home and they rip them off, you know, my oldest, my younger two, they don't know any difference. Stick it on, then we get around. But so I, so you see that, so we're dealing with that in the schools, you know, trying to get them walk around to make them keep the masks up so that we're not in a place where we've got extra contact tracing that I don't even know how they are staying awake with all that they're doing with that. The feeling, what hit me, we had a student recently say it, and I've heard it in my house, they are panicked that we're going to shut down again, and it's a real panic. And there are some students that, you know, can insightfully say like, okay, no, we're not in that same place. But there is, there's a lot of people that have that PTSD, I mean, I, you know, I feel, I feel a little like, that we're going to be shut down again, they're going to be isolated again, they're going to have to quarantine. I mean, there've been students who have had to quarantine in isolation in their house away from everyone else, so that they're off the house. And it is impacting them. And my number one, I mean, yes, the adults certainly are struggling too, but like my number one is these kids. And it just breaks my heart that, you know, we're continuing to see the mental health stuff that we are, but it makes sense. So I feel like every single thing we approach this year has to be from a genuine place of care around kids here, you know. Dexbury isn't alone, but wait times to get any kind of counseling appointment, even if you call referral, is at least five business days. Anyone that has a child in crisis knows that five business days is, you know, it's years, it's life or death in some cases. So hospitals are full, there are kids in hallways, you know, waiting for, waiting for beds. There aren't enough counselors, and that's, you know, they are full. When you finally get someone, they say, okay, sure, I mean, I had this experience, maybe when, you know, two months from now, you can have an appointment, it's like, whoa. Some of the counselors aren't trained in some of the things that the kids are seeing or in some of the family dynamics. And so you're shopping around for the right fit and then it's taking additional months. The guidance staff and mental health staff, K to 12, is out straight. I can tell you that there is not a minute of a day that they are not running a lunch group, doing a one-on-one, responding to a crisis. I mean, these are like real things happening. We've got assistant principals at the elementary schools running additional lunch groups, just because it's all full, you know. At the middle school, you know, we're down a council right now and they're all picking up, you know, they're so good, they're all picking everything up. They are just constantly, constantly reacting. And that's what I think the biggest trend is right now, is that I don't feel like we're in a great position of doing anything proactively. And that, you know, always worries me, because I feel like we are so busy reacting and then so tired and trying to like get back in and go in the next day. And I just would love to have some time to think about ways that we can be more proactive and intentional and get some additional support as needed, because, you know, everyone's full and they just keep taking on and taking on, because it's what's needed, and it makes sense. We've got our Gosnell counselor that's in, that does between Alden and the middle school, I mean, she's full. We have the additional, you know, the thing is, it's not just what the kids are dealing with themselves and then, you know, coming to school and other activities, it's what's going on in their homes. And, you know, what I found out last year, I'm talking to a lot of the senior parents when we put out the confidential calls of your financial things, I mean, I was blown away by what people were sharing about what's going on in their house. And, you know, I know that that's not unique to Dexbury, but I think there's a lot more going on than a lot of people know. And I think especially with Dexbury, it's contained and it's kept. But the kids are coming in, you know, there's a ton of divorces going on, there's substance abuse increases. There is, you know, someone lost a job, and they are just carrying all of that and coming in. And so it is, it is a real thing that they're, that they're dealing with. We have a lot, we've had an uptick in numbers of students that need financial support. And while we've always had that group and we've always had the funds, we've done things, we've seen a real increase in significant need for support and students crying out, you know, saying, I need help, my family needs help. So we have been fortunate that with the Rotary Club, we reached out to Danielle and Interfaith, Chris Neim, we're actually, Caitlin and Beth and I are going on a meeting tomorrow with all of these agencies in town to talk about putting together something that's going to be a community-wide resource for help so that we can put it on our website. So families don't have to feel like they have to come to me and to schools a whole lot, but they know where to go. You know, I've been here for 18 years and there were things that they were telling me that they have for resources, I didn't even know. And so it made me feel so great that we have this stuff, but now I want to make sure that everybody knows and they can access it as they need it, so that we can have support. So that's, but we would love to get some more programming and stuff. It's been great that we've been able to offer a lot of online programming and partner with other, other towns and look at educational program that people can do from their own living room. You know, what we heard loud and clear, which was, I think, a good thing of COVID is, families being like, we cannot come into one more of that, but you know, like I'm running this one to this practice and going here. But if you offer it on Zoom, I can make dinner and have it on in here, or I can be reading my kid a bedtime story and then jump on. So we're trying to do a lot more of that and be able to have that. And then I just think, I think, you know, I know it came up in the needs, but the more we can put into the elementary schools truthfully to do the proactive work around SEO and all of those things, so the additional counselors or additional supports there, it is going to benefit us, you know, long-term by strides. So I would hugely advocate for any additional support that we're putting there. So what's working, while I talked about that, we've, we've really been able to partner with a lot of local schools. I actually was on a statewide guidance Zoom, which was nice. We have never done that, I've never met with the counterparts across the whole state. So that was interesting to get to hear all of the different things that are working. At the high school, we've been able to see kids more with that academic support. I am so thankful for that new schedule. I know it's not working the best it could be for like everyone, but I can tell you for guidance, it's amazing, because the fact that it rotates, meaning kids can come down more, and they're not feeling like they're leaving a class or missing something to come see us. And so that has been very well. We would like to be getting in more to do some more curriculum in those academic support. So they were originally designed to be grade level specific. We had to mix it up a little bit, but I still think they're, for the most part, that's, we'll be able to get in there. At the elementary schools, their ability to do all this lunch, the lunch groups and stuff is really, they're loving it, they're enjoying it. They're meeting all sorts of kids that I don't think would have presented previously and are now, because they need some of that social connection and some other relationships. But they're definitely like six lunches, I think Shannon said, because of COVID, they're running six lunches. And so that's like her whole day, other time she gets to lunch, and she's got more kids that want to do it than, than can. We're going to be going through a guidance review process. We're supposed to start in the fall, admittedly, I begged if we can put it off just a little bit, just so I could get my head right. But we're going to start that in January, and it's going to be a K to 12. And we're going to look to use some outside, obviously build the group from the parents and counselors and staff members and stuff, but look for some of the outside state organizations from Master and stuff to help us look at what is a great program and what are the things, you know, I've been here so long, I think you become immune sometimes to like, oh, well, it's working, so like, obviously. But like, what else could we be doing? What are some of the programs that we haven't looked at? What are the practices that we're, we're doing that are okay, not great, and keep going from there? And so those will become our goals for moving into the next year, that will come out of that review. So I think probably for the end of the year, again, maybe, yeah, so at the end of the year, you can go for that. But we're going to do a survey out also to get like just general feedback and. Thank you, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, going back to the topic of the AP exam. When you're looking over time, I know that the past couple of years that COVID has caused a novel. But when you review this course over time, typically, I think we have to see the kind of bell curve in terms of the, how many students score one and two and three, four, five. If you don't see that bell curve, does that, and say over a two years or three years, does that prompt some kind of review process for the AP course?
Yeah, so I would say, five years ago, that used to be a huge subject. Beginning of the year, it was like, oh, the AP scores are out, and you would look exactly at what you're talking about, how many were in each thing and like what, was there a change in teacher, was there a change in course content, like what the, and then you could even go, so two teachers taught the same, you could look at what the scores were by that and all that. It, that went away a little bit, because it's stayed pretty flat. I don't think you see, and in it, and I can even send you, but it was sort of the breakdown of the numbers. But we have stayed relatively consistent with the numbers, even in the ones and the twos and the threes and the fours. Where we did see a huge jump this year was in our AP MAX. They went up very well, which is interesting, because we had other scores in a testing that didn't show that. So, you know, it definitely is something, it's not a bad idea, the subject supervisors get all this information, and I can tell you, they definitely comb through it and probably are way more well-versed than I am to be able to articulate that. But it definitely becomes a conversation, what happens with that, I think.
I think too, you mentioned that more students are taking AP courses without the pressure. And I think that the last few years have really told us that, even before the pandemic, the kids were feeling anxious and high pressure and they were scheduled to the max, and we all know our students from sports activity, music program. And they're taking many, many AP courses, which you don't see at every single high school across the Commonwealth. I can tell you that the pressure to take a lot of APs is very high here. And I think with that encouragement for kids to take a class just for the experience of it, also kind of eliminates some of that pressure to be studying like crazy to try to get a three, four, or five, to try to just take the course for the experience, learn as much as you can. They're doing really well on their coursework and assignments, but the pressure isn't really being put on them as much as it may have been in past years to kind of freak out over taking that test and doing as well as you can. Which of course, we want the content to be taught so that you don't have to be studying for those as much. But I definitely think that we always want to look to see that the grades the students are getting along the way, align with the students that are getting ones and twos, because we always are concerned to look when we do an analysis of it. If someone's getting a one or a two, but they're getting a 97 for their grade all through, I feel like there's a little bit of a discrepancy there. And so I think that those are the conversations we have where grading, there's so much focus on grading, but we also want to make sure that students are getting actual feedback about mastery, because it's all about mastery of the content.
And I can tell you, some of the students, even from, and it's more recent, but some of the ones when we looked into like who got a one, they admittedly, they were, no, I And I can tell you some of the students, even from, and it's more recent, but some of the ones when we looked into like who got it, they, they admittedly, they were, no, I didn't want to make us do the exam. So I sat there and did the exam, but they didn't care about the grade, you know, it wasn't, for them, it wasn't about that. It was about the AP course, so.
And has that coordinator position been built?
Yes, Teresa Rafferty is doing it. She has grade.
And is there a kind of long, well, I suppose you, you know, in your, in the course provision, you're looking for student demand to drive courses. So for example, the, the thing that I was thinking about with the AP course was we have, we're, we're trying to increase our staff offering in the middle school. You want to add, but our science AP courses, we have biology and physics, but no chemistry.
This year.
It's every other year.
It's been every other, sometimes you run it twice in a row, environmental science jumped back in. We did run AP computer science and principles. Um, it was with an online one, so that did come back in. It does. It's, there's only so much they can fit.
Right.
Um, and so students, um, a lot of times apply for all of the AP sciences and then pick the ones that run.
Right.
Um, so they can get them because they're, they're a block and a half, you know, so it's hard to fit. But, I mean, there's definitely other AP courses that, you know, just in general, people have talked about running. And I, I think there's some that sound amazing and it would be nice to do. And I, I think students would sign up for them if they knew about them, but, you know, you have to promote them.
Right.
And we've talked about like dual enrollment courses even.
Right.
Coming in, um, at all levels and, and putting those into, back into the first phase. That was supposed to be before, as we were heading before the shutdown, that was one of the things we were doing was we had been meeting with local colleges about that, which, you know, to me, those are guaranteed credits.
Right.
You know, like, I think that's so important.
But I know in some of the, some of the universities, the particularly in kind of science-based majors, if you can complete your APs in high school, then it boosts you out of the freshman, you know, 300 student lecture course and.
Yep. And it's like, those benefits are what a lot of people see in the advanced registration or the housing or the ability to jump your intro in some of those specific programs.
Next on our agenda is the air quality report with Miss Blake and Miss Smalls. Very exciting. You'll see why in a minute.
So just as a brief introduction, so Christina Knowles has joined us here as a new facilities director.
Okay, I'm sitting here the whole time thinking you're like hovering for the flipper.
I was just waiting my turn.
Thank you, thank you.
So one of the first tests that Christina was able to have was, um, in addition to the great flood of 2021.
We weren't here until the week after, a couple of weeks after the great flood.
Great flood.
Shortly there.
There was still water inside.
So we did, um, we have been in the past performing some air quality testing in some surface area testing. Just as a part of the district's cleaning protocols, um, we were really careful about doing this as a result of COVID. And we do anticipate that we'll continue doing this on an ongoing basis going forward. And so last year we performed the testing multiple times throughout the course of the school year. Um, but it was a little bit different for us because at some points in the year, we didn't have our full population of students um, in the building just due to the hybrid learning model. And so this year we did have, um, the same vendor that's performed the testing for us, um, come in and perform some of the, the different testing. So I'm going to pass it over to Christina.
Um, so the company that we use is Gearhot Environmental. So they've been doing it for a number of years, as Katie had said, for Duxbury Public Schools, but as well as doing some work for the town of Duxbury. Um, the owner of the company is a 20-year industrial hygienist who's been doing this for, for quite a long time. Uh, and the air quality testing that we've been doing, to your point, uh, is a proactive approach rather than reactive. Uh, it just turned out that she was coming to perform our semi, semi-annual testing right around the same time that the news report came out stating that there were some issues with mold. And we were schools, um, across the Commonwealth with one of them being Duxbury. So we did, uh, perform the normal testing that we would. In addition to that, we tested for sanitation. So that ensures that we're limiting the spread of all particulates, not just COVID in general. We did randomized, non-viable aerosol cassette, uh, cassette testing. And so what this does is this gives a snapshot in time of what the air quality looks like. And to your point, um, when we'd done this testing last year, we were either operating on a, on a hybrid model or we didn't have as many students. Uh, we're, we're at full capacity now. It gave us a really good snapshot and what that indicated was that all of our areas, um, of air quality were within, you know, good limits stating that there was no issues in the school, whether it be particulates from mold spores or COVID or any sort of like bacterial particulates. So everything from that report came out successful in all of our schools. There are reports, um, that are located in the school committee folder that you guys can look at. Uh, if you want to dig deeper into it, if there's any information that's not included in those, um, that you'd like me to follow up on or get further information on, we can do that. Uh, but we will be doing this again. I think we calculated it was May. So she'll be coming back again, um, to perform the same testing to see if there's, you know, any difference in, in what we're seeing. We did test in relation to the great flood of 2021. Um, we tested that wing of Alden twice. Uh, so she performed the testing on November 17th, and that was at the time that we had all of the remediation equipment in. We were drying everything out. It was before anything was taken down. Uh, following her leaving, we did do the demo of that way. I had her come back to make sure that after the demo, there was no issues, that everything was dried appropriately before we start to do a rebuild. So that report also came back well.
I noticed in the conclusion, the wording of the, there were, there were three reports.
Sure.
For the, for Chandler, Alden and then the middle school high school. And the wording of the conclusion for the Chandler and for the middle school high school was essentially the same, that there was, there were no issues. But the wording for Alden was different. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? It seems less unequivocal or more equitable, I should say, uh, than the middle school, high school and Chandler. And I wondered if that had to do with age of the building or the great flood or.
Yeah. So, so the conclusion, so this is the first report that she did. So this conclusion is from when she came in November 17th. So, so it was a conclusion based on the fact that in result of the great flood of 2021, these were her findings. Uh, knowing that she was going to be coming back to perform additional testing to make sure that, uh, we used a company to come in and remediate. And she just wanted to ensure that everything that they did was, was appropriate and that we had no issues of any mold growth or any residual water.
Okay, understood.
And I believe, did we upload the second report? Or do I need to send that over to you of the one that she did post? Okay. So we need to upload that, that out. So there'll be one that's from November 17th and then one from the following.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Last discussion item, FY23 budget discussion. I think this is just a placeholder in case people had any more questions after further digesting. Right? Cause we're not, we're going to vote on it in January.
Yeah, we're going to be the budget forum. The budget, budget here, the budget here.
January 12th, budget hearing. So, so what are we going to vote on?
So if it's okay, I can just start with a quick update on a few things that happened since our last meeting. Um, so we did, as I mentioned earlier, we have the opportunity to present the budget to the finance committee. So we presented the level services budget, um, and just briefly explained some of the components that went into the work of creating level services. And then we also presented our list of budget priorities above and beyond level services. And so that was the list that we have reviewed with you all at our, during our original budget presentation. Um, and so since that meeting, I believe that the town manager and the town finance director had the opportunity to also present their recommendations to the board of selectmen. I believe that meeting took place on Monday night. Um, and so the, um, the presentation included a budget dialogue. But I don't believe that it included the actual omnibus budget presentation that has more of the line level details for each one of the departments. But I believe that there was just reference to the school department, being funded at the level services budget. And then there was some reference of funding, um, $275,000 in addition to level services. Um, so certainly it's not the full number that we had asked for with all of our budget priorities. But it is a portion of it. So that's just the update of some of the conversations that have happened um, in some of the meetings that have occurred since our last school committee meeting.
Did they indicate what the 275 was before or just what they felt?
I mean, they can, they can.
No, but sometimes they do ask us, why do you think you need this? Why do I need to need that? So how much, how much are we missing from our asking?
It was 664, which was.
So, so when we vote, as a school committee, we're supposed to be voting on the budget figure that we think is in the best interest of our students. What's that number?
What's the number I think is in the best interest of our students? And I'm being conservative because I think we have another page where there's even further needs that we are discussing. But I think that, um, we really prioritize, those are the highest priority items that we feel though we need to address the, the needs of our students, the way they're presenting themselves. And we've been really strategic with using the Esther funding and other, um, other fund, funding sources that we have available. But I would say, um, full day kindergarten, if I had to look at the recommendation, might be something that I would recommend putting on hold for a year. I think, um, Katie did a really nice job making a plan. And I think that part of our strategic plan goal was to develop a plan to be able to put full day kindergarten, um, as part of our, um, operating budget. So that would be available for all students. But if I'm looking at the needs of the students this year, I think that the items that we listed are essential. It would be difficult to even rank order. I think, um, Chandler and Alden School, we certainly have seen a great need for an additional guidance council, uh, guides for adjustment counseling to the schools. We've seen a great need to maximize the use of that, um, academic support period at the middle school with some direct instruction for our students in the areas that they need. We've seen a great need for additional, um, support of our students at the middle school, the additional assistant principal. And I think sometimes people say, why wouldn't they be adding more teachers? It's the teachers that we need, um, additional support for the students. But we feel so that assistant principal would be able to better support our teachers. We don't have space to add classrooms right now. Our classroom space is maximized. But what we're seeing is, um, the administrators are so stretched with the social and emotional needs of our students and supporting that, that we're not able to really maximize having our middle school administrators in classrooms where they can best influence teaching and learning by being able to be present in the classrooms and, um, supporting the teachers in that manner and not just going in for the observation and evaluation purposes. We also want to make sure at the middle school that we're identifying our students who need help. And the way we do that is having our administrators looking at our student, um, scores, checking in with the teachers so that we're looking at grading for report cards so that we can get in and support students better, um, at their individual level. And then I think the high school positions were really minimal, what we were looking to add, but had great benefit to them. So we're looking to increase some staffing to support the academic support period at the high school, which rotate. And so it's a little bit more challenging to get in, to be able to help, um, students because if you're needing help in physics during your academic support period, your physics teacher might be teaching that period. So we have to be, um, strategic about how the students might be getting extra help during that academic support period. So with that, if we were to look at a fraction, I think, um, it would be challenging, but we would be able to work together. Um, if we were only funded at the 275,000 level, um, it would be a challenge to prioritize, um, who is most in need. Because I think we balance it pretty evenly in each of the schools. But holding kindergarten is such a huge expense that if we're limited in our ability to implement all of those items, I think that that might be something that we think about putting on hold. And I'm not saying that lightly because I know that that's, um, we don't want to have a burden for our families who are sending their kids in the next couple of years or next year to kindergarten. Um, but it's something that, there's never been a good time to take the plunge and absorb that into our budget. And we're seeing another year where we're not looking at, um, a high enough level service number to be able to make that jump. And I don't know, Katie, if you have anything to add to that, but.
If you take it out, it's about 487, 600.
487, 600, you know, and so the difference, the change, the 487, 600 and the 275 is 212, 600.
Well, I'm looking for the bottom line figure. Right. So your proposal here is 40 million, 272,126 left, 177,210. Is that the figure we're talking about? When we vote, we'll need to have that figure in front of us, if that's what you want us to vote on. I think, I think the one thing, I think in the past years, we've been uncomfortable, um, voting on something that we didn't think would get support. So I think we just all have to be aligned that we're comfortable doing that. I am. Um, I do think the one piece where we're going to get stronger pushback is on the assistant principal position. So I think we just really have to be tight on our justification and why it supports students and not just, you know, a lot of people in the community will see that as administrative layers versus direct service of students. So we just have to be very clean.
We can certainly, um, give a little bit more information about what that would look like. We were really focusing on having assistant principals being in academic support for, um, our students to be able to assist with that academic support block. And there's a lot of oversight that comes into that. And it's really directly, um, I think it was mentioned by Nikki Sembowski, our assistant principals are key in supporting our students' social, emotional learning needs. And it may not be an official, um, regular therapeutic lunch group that you need, but our students do need check-ins with adults. And we're noticing that at the middle school, we're needing to add things such as recess and different breaks in school day that we have, haven't had to, um, really accommodate in years past. And so a lot of that falls onto the assistant principal. And in terms of safety and behavioral issues, we always want to try to be more proactive in addressing pre-bolting or if things are starting to happen, and I think our assistant principals are key in that. And, um, I think that that will eliminate the need for so many investigations and problems if we are able to support students more proactively. But we can certainly organize, um, maybe have Mrs. McGuire, um, attend that meeting if, if there's any questions that might come up. But, um, we feel strongly that the priority items that we put forward were important. Um, and we can certainly have answer any questions or justify them with a little more detail at the January meeting prior to your vote.
Are there, are there, what are the additional opportunities to interact with the town before the January vote? Are there any formal opportunities or is this something we should be working offline?
I think, I don't know that it's formal, but we have been getting some requests for additional documentation from finance committee, um, looking at some different figures. So I think that we'll continue to answer any questions that come up. Um, I don't know that we're going to get invited to another finance committee meeting unless some specific questions come up or fiscal advisory or any of the other select board groups that are looking at the overall budget.
And what is the, has there been any update on the capital budget? Or, or the capital budget.
I think that we had a department head meeting today and it was mentioned that the fiscal advisory might have presented the recommendations to the finance committee, but we haven't received any, uh, anything official to see what the recommendations, recommendations may be. Um, we're waiting some of the information to be shared from Rainie Reed or John Hume. So I'm going to go back to the budget for the Esther funds being used for the dean position in the DMS and DHS. Will that not be carried over? Are you hoping that gets absorbed by the assistant principal that you're asking for? So the dean position was, um, to be for this fiscal year. While we were experiencing a shortage of assistant principals. While we were experiencing a shortage of assistant principals based on medical maternity.
So that was like a.
That wasn't a, wasn't a permanent position.
Okay.
Sorry, forgot that. And I know, I have a tough time with the administrative position with the assistant principal. And I just always feel, and I know you mentioned that people feel about the teacher positions and, but I just think that when you talk about social emotional learning, I always feel like the people at ground level are the people that really need to be able to provide that social emotional support, recognize any issues that are present during class. And if they were, there was extra staffing at that level, those issues might be able to be addressed. And I go back to patient care and I had a patient and I went, I was overwhelmed. I went and talked to this psychologist. I'm like, I'm the worst person for that person to talk to. He said, no, you're the best person for that person to talk to because you were there. And I think about our teachers. They're the people that are there most of the time. So I want to make sure they have the support they need. So that's why I have the concern with the assistant principal position for that much money. I see your point on it. Can I just counter that really quickly? That I would, I would argue that our administrators are the people that are boots on the ground and not just the teachers. And that's the expectation from me and from central office and from across the district. And all of us were teachers. And so I think that often gets forgotten. We didn't get plucked out of the business world and put in school administrative position. I'm a special education teacher at heart and I always will be. And so I think that the administrators are well equipped to be able to have, to have those relationships with students and the expectation, and it's not an office position, which is sometimes.
So what percentage are they in the classroom or with the children? Like, what percentage of their job description says how much time is being spent with kids versus in meetings?
Yes. I, I think this is exactly what I was trying to get more in terms of clarifying the ball. Because what I've learned in the last year, two years, is that the assistant principal role is very different now than it was ten years ago. I will, and I just saw it, you know, doing the test to say with my daughter two weeks ago and going in there. And Mr. G, I mean, he was in there. She knew him immediately.
Oh, I agree with you on that.
They're hands-on with the students. And I really do think this is going to be an education, not only for us, but for the community, that the assistant principal role is not a sit in the office. You know, I remember from my growing up, you went in, they were the enforcer, right? You get in trouble, you get called to Mr. G's office, you come into the office, yell at you, you get detention. And the whole, my understanding now is it's very, very different. It really is the hands-on kid stuff. And it's kind of, it's like the floating teacher who can support all the kids. But I think that's, that's your, we need to educate all of us and the community and, and give the facts. And I appreciate Christine's request for what's the kind of hands-on.
Well, not even like, what's the, yeah, like a job description of that. But I also look at the ethnic advisory council and I look at all the administrators sitting in that meeting. And I'll have to tell you, like, I felt much better about you being there when he said, you know, you helped with the financials and getting like, I was like, okay, that makes sense. So I just think a little more education and information would go a long way.
True. To your point, sometimes our teachers do have the best relationships with students, but they don't necessarily have the time to take a few minutes to talk to the students. So that assistant principal can create that time by going into the classroom. So the teacher can leave the classroom with that student and address the situation. And then the assistant principal is in with the other students and the class is continuing. And so that issue can be addressed by the teacher who may have the best relationship with that person. So that would just be one way that I would see the assistant principal and how they would directly impact students, students. However, to your point, the teachers have a great relationship, but we need to create the time for teachers to be able to work with the students. So that would be one way that the assistant principal may go in, cover the class for a few minutes or however long it may be that day, so that the teacher can then help the other student who might be.
And that's perfect because that's exactly, you know, the concern. And even, even beyond that, the teachers aren't with their students seven hours a day. But the assistant principals are there all day long at recess, at passing time. And so I think when we're talking about cafeteria, they are, they're the ones that are in the less structured times of the school day that aren't academic. And I think that continuity of having the students be able to talk to them anytime that they're around, they're very visible in the school. And so those are the times of the day when the teacher's not available, that the student needs a safe person to be able to kind of intervene, have some authority to be able to say, okay, we're not climbing on that right now. Let's get to class or whatever's going on, but also to be there to supervise and to just meet the needs of the kids.
One of the complexities too at the middle school is just the team model. So I think that was one thing for me, just not being as familiar with the secondary level is just kind of the, the different complexities that that team model rarely brings up when it comes to staffing and being able to kind of break down the allocation of our employees. So it would be difficult for us at the middle school. And I know we've talked about class size and adding teachers in the past, but it's really hard to add just one. And so you can kind of, you can see that in our request with adding the math and writing tutors. We had to add three because we wanted to make sure that it was added at each grade level. And they really would have the ability to quote, but it's really hard to just add one teacher because even multiple teams, you have multiple grade levels. So it's hard to kind of carve up that FTE to make it, make it as meaningful as we'd like to.
So from this conversation, I feel like the issue isn't with the position. The issue really is with the stereotypical assistant principal definition stands for. So I just think a better, like, or just a job description, I think, would go a long way. And then my only other thing as I was going through all this was that I'm so glad we had the guidance counselor presentation because it really summed up and it made me feel better about the need for the SEL, social worker and, and the counselor positions. And I feel like sometimes having someone at that level come and talk to us and present on the need, the justification is just that much louder for me to hear. And basically, that's what I need to feel in order to feel comfortable saying, yes, we need this money. And yes, I approve. And going forward. So, you know, we see the curriculum reviews from both reading and writing and social studies. And I feel like if we can tie some of the stuff that you're presenting, or if you could tie it in for me, like, these were the asks from our curriculum reviews. This is where we're putting that money so that those asks are being met. Then I feel like the teachers are being heard. So I just, I like it all to be tied together a little. And you guys have done a great presentation, but I can tell you, just from that fifteen, twenty-minute talk, I feel a hundred percent more comfortable with the guidance counselor because I was like, that was one of the things that I was like, I don't know if I'm okay with it. And now I'm like, I'm so okay with it, you know what I mean? So I think you guys did a great job. Just a little bit more tangible for me, I think, would be easier going forward. But a hundred percent agree with Julia. I think we need to ask what we need to ask for and not just ask for what we think they're going to give us.
But I'd also like to, have to remember that the presentation we had about educator evaluation model. Who's in the classrooms watching our teachers teach? It's the assistant principals and the curriculum project leaders. And so if they're over, overtaxed in supporting, doing all the really good work they're doing supporting our student social emotional lead, they're not in the classrooms observing teaching, or they're not in the classrooms making sure that improvements in educational provision or pedagogy, they're not making sure those are happening because that, that falls by the wayside. So there's our, they're also, in addition to the social emotional aspect, they're also the part of the quality control system that we have. So we do actually need to allocate enough FTE to that, to quality control and to reform development, instructional development. And the assistant principals are really important there. And, and with our students recovering from COVID year, we really do want to make sure that we have the administrators in place in the classrooms to monitor the quality of teaching and learning, you know, in real time.
I agree with that.
So. Yeah. It's so things, not only the social emotional, it's the quality. These are all the things that will have to feed in for a town meeting, right? These are the.
At the end of the day, it's about the kids. And if the teachers feel supported, that directly affects the kids. And I know this is like so random, but like happy wife, happy life. I feel like happy teachers, happy kids. You know what I mean? Like, if they're happy, then our kids automatically feed off that. And the teachers, I, and all of you, I can't thank you enough for all you've done this year because coming off of COVID and the exhaustion and just getting through to Christmas break, I just think is, or December break, I think is just an amazing accomplishment. So to you and to your teachers and principals, like, kudos. And I'm so proud to be a part of this committee. And thank you for welcoming me back to Halloween.
Okay. Okay. Any other budget questions or are we good for having? Okay. All right. So I think that's our last item. And I do not see anybody here for public comment, just to confirm.
Clear the room.
We're out of date.
I know we usually do a little into a term, but according to Robert's rules, I can say the meeting is adjourned.
Oh, I like it, Shannon.
Have a good night.
Good night, Ray.